Since our last meeting, Enfield and the state of Connecticut lost a great American, Thomas J. Serrard. He was the predecessor to this very chair, sat in this chair for four years. I was honored to call him a very good friend and mentor for many years. I was honored to serve with him as a fellow board member for two years, of which time I also served as his vice chair for 10 months. He gave so much of his personal time and energy to our school system and town during his time on the board. Tom was a wealth of knowledge to all of us. He could quote state statutes and laws from memory, and I will miss that the most of them. I could call him at any time or text him at any time and he would respond promptly. Tom was a big part of making Enfield Public Schools what they are today, and never forget that. Before he served our town, Tom served his country honorably for six years with the U.S. Navy aboard the USS Boston. He then became a self-employed businessman and then a local business owner making his contribution to our local economy. To my friend always and chairman emeritus, rest in peace, and God be with you till we meet again. Please stand for the prayer. A eternal rest grant upon them, oh Lord, and let perpetual light shine upon them. May the souls of all the faithful departed, through the mercy of God, rest in peace. Amen. Before we do the pledge, Tom's favorite saying after every pledge was, "God bless America." I would also like to add, "God bless Tom Serrard." So now let's do the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. God bless America. Fire evacuation. We have two exits from the chamber, one to the rear of the chamber is out to the parking lot, and one to my left, your right, down, left down the stairs into the rear parking lot. Could we have roll call, please?
Mr. Renier?
Here.
Mrs. DePoe?
Here.
Mr. Rutledge?
Here.
Mrs. Riley?
Here.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Here.
Mrs. Hernandez? Mr. Neville?
Here.
Mr. Ryder?
Here.
Chairman Cruzel?
Here. Ms. Hernandez is at a spelling bee with one of her children, so next board meeting, we're going to quiz her on spelling words. Board guests, Mr. Trezak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First guest this evening, I'd like to welcome Dr. Marilyn Goodnight, our K-12 music coordinator. And Dr. Goodnight's here to introduce several Enfield High School students that were selected to participate in the Connecticut All-State Music Festival. And I will leave the details to Dr. Goodnight. Welcome, everyone.
There should be a remote, there should be a remote microphone there somewhere. There you go.
Music teachers are all very proud of these students. None of us can remember a time in the past when we had this many students in Allstate in one year. So I'm going to introduce them and let them tell you a little bit about the experience. But first of all, let me tell you that they all auditioned back in February. They had to prepare a very challenging solo. They had to sight read and play scales in a very fast tempo. And they all scored very high, which is why they got selected to participate in the Allstate Festival, which was held in April during vacation week in Hartford. And they'll tell you more about that. But performing in the Allstate Chorus was Sophia Sheehan and Emily Vandal and Maria Sestoli, who couldn't be here tonight. She was in it last year. It was her second year in the program. And performing with the Allstate Band was Luke Barnes on clarinet and Jonathan Legere on piccolo and flute. And then performing with the Allstate Orchestra was Ben Carrier. He was in it last year. And I also wanted to mention that he recently sent in an audition, application and audition tape for the National High School Music Festival, which will be held in Orlando in November. So we're all keeping our fingers crossed. He should hear in the next month or so whether he was selected for that. Again, we've never had anyone from Enfield, I believe, in the National High School Music Festival. So, and who wants to speak first?
Yeah, thank you all for having us here tonight. And thank you for helping to fund our whole organization. We really appreciate it. Allstate is really a great experience. You get to meet a whole bunch of great people. And also, the food is pretty awesome, too. I can't say the same about my back after the, after the couple of nights, though. Yeah, it's just a really great time. And we learn a lot from the conductors that come up from all across the U.S. You know, you get to improve your skills, too. So it's really just a great experience overall.
Hi, I'm Emily Vandal, and I'm a freshman. I was in the mixed choir. And Allstate was like the best musical experience I've ever had because I made so many friends, I learned so much. My conductor was from California. And on our German song, she would just say that we're saying a lot of stuff wrong. So I learned some German. And then, all the friends that I made, I'm still in touch with them. And I'm really happy about that. And I get to see one perform in a show soon, so I'm excited for that. It was a very good experience. And I'm just really excited to audition for regionals in Allstate again next year.
I was in the treble choir, which is an all-women's choir. And I was really nervous at first because I was the only one because Maria and Emily were in mixed choir. So I didn't really know anybody. But everybody there, including our conductor, were like really welcoming. And our conductor was, his name was Dr. T.J. Harper. And he was just very vocal with how he wanted us to sound. And even though it took like a really long time for us to kind of get together, because it's very rhythmic, the whole set we had, it was just really fun to be together like that.
I'm Luke Barnes, and I was in the Allstate Band. And I just think that Allstates was a very fun experience. It's never, it's not anything that I was used to before, going away from home a couple nights and just getting to play music all day. So thank you for funding it.
And the music they learned is at such a high level, incredible repertoire that they studied at this festival. And they're all better musicians. And they bring that back to their programs here. And it makes the whole program here better, too. So we appreciate that.
Any... Whoa, 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 don't disappear yet. We got, we got question and answer session now. It's about, it's going to last about two hours, I'm just letting you know. Any questions, anyone? Ms. DePoe?
First, a comment, just well done to all of you for all of your hard work. And, you know, thank you to your instructors, the staff that has supported you, and your families as well for helping to make that possible for you. So it's just really great to see you guys up there and hearing about everything that you're accomplishing. So my first question is, ladies, could you just sing us a little something? No, I'm kidding, I'm totally kidding. I would never do that to you. But that leads to my second question, which is, were any of the performances recorded somewhere that we might be able to access them to see what you've done?
They were all professionally recorded.
Okay, so if you guys could forward that to us, that would be amazing. Thank you. That's it, great job.
Mr. Neville?
You guys are the reason we do this job. We come here and, and we have all the stuff we have to do, but deal with budget and all this stuff. But we hear about the performances of our kids and the skills that you learn and how well you represent us. You make us proud. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Well, I'll add that, how was the acoustics in the convention center? Was it?
No.
Not so good? I didn't, I didn't think, I saw that right away. And I'm like, are you kidding me? That's where they stuck you guys? But, well, it wasn't my call, so I'm sorry. But anyway, congratulations. Thank you for representing Enfield. And thank you again. Another round of applause for them.
Mr. Chairman, while she's here, because she'll never allow me to do this at any other time, Dr. Goodnight, you win. So as long as I've known Dr. Goodnight, which is far too long, I like to admit, she, you're not going to find a more staunch advocate for not just arts education, but particularly music education. And especially, as Mr. Neville referenced, conversations around budget time. And when Dr. Goodnight will not only share what the needs are of their department, but she also takes the extra length to explain just the benefits that our kids will get in addition to learning how to play an instrument or the performance piece. And I think tonight was evident on the skills that she's been advocating for quite a number of years about how our kids gain self-confidence, public speaking skills. You could see that these kids do a better job of speaking to you guys than we do. And that's all testament to the hard work that our music department does, in particular, Dr. Goodnight. She was so excited when she had made this notification. We made sure that we got her here as quickly as we can. So thank you again, Dr. Goodnight.
For next year's budget, could you do it as a coral presentation?
Careful what you wish for, Mr. Chairman.
She probably will. 6B iPad presentation.
We're going to move on to the John Dig portion of the meeting this evening, which I will state for the record, he's the smartest guy I've ever met. So I enjoy listening to him dig as much as everyone else. But the first presentation is actually something that we've been talking about coming for quite some time. We've had to make a couple of adjustments. But we've promised you since my original budget presentation with our initiative for going with one-to-one devices for all of our kids and our iPad implementation program, that we can all sit up here and tell you about how wonderful they are, but it carries a heck of a lot more weight when we can actually get them in our students' hands and they can show you exactly why we all put our necks on the line and said we need to get these in our kids' hands. So without further ado, I'd like to welcome John Dig. And he brought some very special guests with you. There's also one that you can look at, but I'm not giving it to you. They're done, so that you'll give them your undivided attention. So I turn it over to, and those who don't know, John Dig's our K-12 Science and Technology Coordinator.
So thank you. As Chris mentioned, back in December, I was part of a presentation to curriculum subcommittee where we had the adults kind of show how we think the iPads could be used for curriculum and instruction. However, after talking to the students, we found out that they were using a lot of apps and technology already. So we actually gave a couple iPads to two of our students here. So we have Erica Turner and Caroline Donilon, who are juniors at EHS. And they're going to walk you through how they're already using some of the technology and how it can be improved by the use of the iPads in the class.
So should I use this? Do I have to press it? Oh, okay. Okay, this is good, all right. So, so far, what I've been using on the iPad, oh, also, I'm Erica Turner. I'm a junior at Enfield High School. So I'm taking right now a lot of math and science courses, including AP Biology and AP Physics. So I feel like, for me personally, these iPads are really helpful just because out of all the math and science courses, I feel like the technology helps the most out of those. So, so far, what I've been using already at home are apps like Khan Academy, which is basically just a learning app where you can get special lessons and stuff and teachers can assign assignments for you to do at home. But if we have these iPads, then it would be really convenient because we would be able to finish them anywhere instead of having to wait till we get home to use a computer. Or even if we don't have a computer, it's a lot easier to do it on these because they're big and you can do your workout on them and stuff instead of on your phone. But something I didn't use before, which now I really like because of the iPad, is OneNote, which I feel like a lot of people know about it, but specifically for students and stuff, I think it's really helpful. So something that I found is using like a stylus pen is really helpful when you're taking notes because the OneNote app has a lot of different features that you can use. So like, I took a couple of example notes when I was in my biology class. And so there's a bunch of different features, like when you make a shape, it makes a shape for you. And then, same thing with, I also really like the Lasso Select tool. You can select things, you can make them bigger, or you can make them smaller. So I thought that was also really helpful for, if you run out of room on the page, you can always just make words smaller and everything. And you can kind of just organize things how you like them. And I was thinking like, oh, well, maybe notes are easier just with a pen and paper. But in addition to having a lot of these really cool features, I think that it, having it all on the iPads just keeps it really organized. So right now, I have just a folder for AP Biology. But I think if I had this the entire year, I would have a different folder for every class. And then I would make a new set of notes every class that I have. So, yeah, I think they're really helpful. And I think the iPads are a really good idea. In addition, I really like these keyboards. I didn't realize when we got the iPads that we were going to get these keyboards, but they're really easy to type on. And the case is also really cool and like really indestructible, basically. So, yeah.
Can I switch seats with you?
Yeah, this way.
Hi, I'm Caroline Donilon. I'm also a junior at Enfield High. All right. Okay, so one of the apps I want to talk about is already really well-integrated. And it's called Flipgrid. And we use it in our Spanish class right now. And what we use it for, I actually didn't create an account because I already had it on my phone. But we use it to send videos. And it's a way to post videos online to a platform that's just for your class. So we use that in Spanish class. So she'll tell us to talk about this one topic for five minutes. And then we send it in. And it's like not connected to YouTube or anything, so it's completely safe. And we use it, that could be used for Spanish and French, as we already use it for, it could be used for civics and debates. It could be used for music classes, to record, to record songs and stuff. And one thing that I got in this iPad that we haven't had a chance to use is a VR for, right now, I'm taking anatomy. And they have apps, sorry, that allow virtual reality. And so it shows different parts of the human body. Oh, this is a...
Those are men.
And it has different layers of all the organs that it can show you so you can explore. Right now, we look at a lot of charts. And we do do a few dissections, but it's hard to get a holistic view of the human body with every single organ system that we're learning about. So with this, it'll be easier to see how all the different features of the body interact with each other. Although, I would make a smaller person next time I do this. Oh, golly. And the keyboard is nice and detachable. And I agree that the keyboard seems really nice because it'll be perfect. So we don't have to go to a library or get a cart whenever we need to type essays, and it's more accessible during classes. And then, that's it.
That's an example of live TV, folks.
Some of those augmented reality apps are pretty interesting. We've been looking at a number of them for incorporation into some of our existing curriculum because it lets you see things that you really can't see any other way. One example, I think we showed in December, was a turbine engine. So it's a Rolls-Royce turbine engine. And when you, it's hard to manipulate around in close quarters with a TV. But if you have a target down, which lets you set the size of it more accurately, you can really get into detail. And you can see fuel flowing through into the flame cans of the engine and each of the turbine blades spinning. And it shows pressure gradients and other things. It's really quite impressive to see how they can be incorporated.
Any questions? Ms. Riley?
I'm super excited about this. I've been waiting for this presentation. I think I've been bugging Mr. Trezak.
She's been bugging me every, every...
For weeks.
Are they coming, are they coming?
Right. So I know that you said you took notes with it during class. Have you had a chance to take notes with it in class?
I have not, just because I explored other apps when I was given it to me.
All right. Because I'm just wondering like how easier or more natural it is for you to take notes on the iPad or to like write them down?
Personally, I prefer papers. But with OneNote and some other apps, they allow you to scan in all your papers and create them as a PDF. And I think that would be the best solution for me personally is to write stuff down, but then have it all on the iPad because I'm not organized, but I am like a good, more of a note taker. So it has an option, if you want to write on the screen or you want to write your own notes, both options are made much more accessible with the iPads.
Cool. Have we, have we done the drop test? How far can we drop it?
We're not doing a drop test.
Well, I mean, but kids drop things. All right, all right.
If someone dropped one in the curriculum presentation, it was fine.
That is true. You guys did a great job. Wonderful public speaking, like all of our kids in Enfield do. So thank you.
Mr. Neville?
Just a couple of questions. I probably know the answers to some of them anyway. But you folks seem to be kind of taking your own tact here and direction in terms of what works for you. You're using apps that fit your learning style and stuff like that. Is that pretty much the way it's going to be, either you two or John? Are they given certain apps or can they bring, can they download other apps that they may find? Or how does that work out?
So the devices are actually, go through a MDM, Mozel. And what's happening is, there's a process right now where teachers are submitting suggestions for apps that they're using in their classes. And I think there's a list of over 200 and something now. They're working out a process for vetting those. And what will happen is, they'll go to essentially an app store within Mozel. And by doing that, there will be already kind of a pre-selected and approved list of apps that students can just go to and pull from. And as part of it, there's also, it's called a caching server, put in the building. So those apps are already downloaded there. So when the students go to pull them, they're not kind of downloading them from the internet. They're downloading them from a local server at the school. So that speeds up the process of getting apps to devices. It'll speed up the process of doing updates to all of the iPads as well.
Happy to see you guys are using your own different learning styles. You're taking notes in paper and you're scanning them in, PDFs out of it. You're taking notes right away, which would be my preferred way to do it. So I wouldn't have to do it twice. But it's pretty much the way it's going to be. The kids are going to be able to kind of match the apps to their style, to their curriculum, and whatever works best for them.
So I think the students are going to have a choice then on using apps. I think there's a number of teachers that are already integrating some of these into their courses. So OneNote, there's some teachers who are using it because you can create classrooms and push out information through that. And then the students can write right on the notes. And as they, and as Caroline mentioned, you can take in, let's say a teacher handed you a paper at the beginning of class, you can just scan it in as a PDF by just clicking the camera icon and hitting document. It'll scan it in. And then you can write right on it if you wanted to. So students can, can choose to do it. Teachers may initiate the use of some of the apps because they're looking to collect data through them or they're using it. And there's also going to be apps that are coming through with Power School as well, where they might be putting out some classroom activities, notes, resources through that.
Sounds great. Which grade is getting them, how is this being introduced to the kids for next year?
Right now, we're in the process of introducing it to staff. So they're going to be getting iPads probably next, the 21st. They'll start getting them. They'll get used to use them and they'll have the summer to get used to using the iPad. They'll have more training when they come back. I believe the students are getting their iPads shortly after the year starts. And the process is still being fine-tuned for getting them out.
Okay, what grades are getting it in high school? All of them?
All.
Being introduced all at once? Yeah, that's great, that's great. I don't know why you don't use these, too, to help train the teachers. I think they've got some skills.
They did a good job.
They did a wonderful job. Thank you all very much, enjoy them. I wish we had those when I was in school, years and years and years and years ago.
Mr. Ryder?
Two points regarding safety. So one, the actual device safety. So is this the case that we're looking at?
That's the casing keyboard.
Okay. So that, that's, everybody will have this on their iPad? And theoretically, if we drop it, we're, we're in good hands? Okay.
Everyone's universal.
Gotcha. And then regarding, kind of piggybacking something Tim said regarding safety of our students. So they won't be able to download non-approved apps, right? You'll have a list of approved apps and that's, that will be their own app store? So, because I know some people will say like, oh, they're going to download their games on it, et cetera. So they can only download what you pre-approve?
From that Mozel manager.
Right, so that you can't download Pac-Man and things of that nature?
No, one of the things of, and I'm not the right expert to talk about this, but when, when John mentioned the Mozel, that actually handles everything. So including, you guys all get the little red dot on when there's an update. Everything's done universally and it's controlled by our, by, well, by Guy. So Guy has an, Guy has an opportunity to set all of the updates that have to go out. And everything is done universally through that way. And there's multiple layers of protection to make sure students aren't capable of putting things that maybe shouldn't necessarily be on there. Obviously, I wouldn't want to disclose that in a format like this, but there are ways that are under serious consideration to make sure that the, the devices are protected.
So the pre-approved list would include all the educational apps that you guys will approve and, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Poe?
More of just comments, I guess. One thing that I think will be really nice about this, especially as you were demonstrating the functionality with the anatomy material, we in the curriculum committee especially see, we're frequently approving new textbooks as things get updated. And now, we kind of live in a time where there's digital access. And part of purchasing those textbooks and updating our materials is access to those digital resources that are beyond the content that's in the textbook. So I think this is a really good way to kind of eliminate any barriers that students might have to access those additional reinforcing materials. So I just, I think that that's another reason why they're wonderful. Not that there's not already a thousand reasons why they're wonderful. But also, longer term as well, I love that you brought up OneNote for the presentation. I think that in the workplace, I use OneNote all the time. It's hugely popular in workplaces all over, in all different lines of work. And I think we try to think a lot about what are we doing for our students to make sure they're prepared to enter the workforce, whether it's immediately, whether it's after college, whether it's after a technical program. And this is one of those ways that you don't really think it's immediately obvious, but having the advantage of intimate familiarity with such common applications for the workplace is a really great skill to reinforce. So like, for me personally, I type faster than I handwrite. So to have the opportunity to take notes on a tablet would have been incredible when I was in school. But then also, being able to use the stylus, copy down diagrams, draw pictures, star things for yourself. It's a really great system. And maybe not every student will love it. It's not always going to be their preference. But it's definitely something that you'll see beyond the years at Enfield High. So I just, it's really, there are a lot of reasons, long-term, why this is a great resource that we're getting. So thank you guys for showing us.
Mr. Renier?
How big is the hard drive on these?
These are 32 gigabytes. But you have to not really think about hard drive space because we're working in an Office 365 environment. So basically, all of the students' notes, or if they're using OneNote, that's going to go get backed up to the cloud, their Word documents, PowerPoints, things like that. Once you put on the Mozel manager, the basic apps, the Office Suite, you're down to about 22 gigabytes, which is a decent amount of storage. And especially since you can back things up, sync it to your OneDrive, you really, you really have much more storage than that available to you.
Now, will the Wi-Fi within the building get bogged down with so much more Wi-Fi accessible?
From what we hear, they should be able to handle, the network should be able to handle it. So all of the devices are registered and are going on to their own networks. So the MAC address is already registered. And that kind of gives them preference for network capacity over, let's say, the regular guest connection. So if you've been to Enfield High and kind of logged in on the guest, that's a kind of a metered or a regulated connection. And it's going to be a little different for the iPads over on the Apple network.
And I saw on the iPad that the students have the option for the mail. Now, do they sync their own mail up to that? Or is there an ability for the school district to possibly give an email address to all the students?
They already have an email address through the Office 365. I don't think right now they're actually receiving mail to it. The devices they have right now are set up on the teacher's side.
Okay.
So some of the functionality is going to look a little different between the student device and the teacher device. Simply to get them out for students to use right away, we just set up devices under teacher account. And then they got to use the apps for the last four or five days. teacher account, and then they got to use the apps for the last four or five days before they came here.
Is there an understanding with the students who take the iPad that they need to utilize the safety barrier that it's encased in? Or can students go out and get their own covers?
They're going to have to use the case that comes with it, and that's part of the expectations that'll be laid out for the students with the rollout of the devices. It really doesn't make much sense to give them a device if they can go out and just buy a silicone skin to put on, that iPad's going to get ruined. Part of the nice things about them is that although the cases all look the same, as soon as they log in and create their profile, the splash screen when they log in, it's going to say the student name.
Okay.
And that it's an Enfield High School iPad. So there's not really confusion amongst, you know what I mean? There's not, no one's going to say, oh, well, that's mine, you know what I mean? When they all look the same. Because as soon as you open it up, it's going to say whose it is.
Okay.
If you change the case out, the keyboards are, it's magnetic.
Okay.
The keyboards won't work if you went and put a regular, you know, cheap iPad case.
Ms. Riley, one more question.
Oh, you're not doing it? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Does the school district have the ability to locate the iPads if they're lost or stolen?
Yeah, when they first set it up, when they log into their account, it's going to enable location services on the device, so for the Find My iPad function. And so that is required as part of the MOZIL manager.
Okay.
And that's set up kind of automatically when they register the device.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Ms. Riley, one more time.
Okay. So Rich, that was part of my question about lost, stolen, where to find them. So we'll have some sort of protocol written up for like what happens in that situation or if it breaks or whatever, and we'll be able to have that on day one ready for the kids?
That'll all be part of the agreement when they, when they're first rolled out.
Okay.
Mr. Neville.
Some of the devices that we're looking at, you could take at home, but you couldn't print at home, you couldn't do those kinds of things. Can you do that? Can you print at another printer, or are you restricted to just doing it at the, in the school's network?
We're hoping to eliminate printing, Mr. Neville.
I like that idea.
I'm only speaking from experience because mine at home doesn't have one like this. There are restrictions that can be placed, and I think that's all part of the conversation. There might be requirements for students to be able to print to certain network printers and things along those lines, but that's all being worked out with the, the teachers are just getting them in their hands now and need some feedback from them on how it would work for all their classes.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm still from the world of curable paper, so you know, we used to type, you know.
If it makes you feel any better, we're two steps behind, obviously, these two because these two young ladies were fantastic, but we tried to lead by example before we told you we were doing this. So Mr. Long and myself started. You noticed we were drawing on things and we weren't just putting mustaches on him. But to answer one of your questions about the difference between taking traditional notes and not, it's as simple as going into your notes, scan, if you have a piece of paper in front of you and scanning it, you're actually going to, there's a document later on this evening that I have to use that we had one paper copy of, so we both scanned it, drew on it, made notes, sent it back and forth to each other electronically, and then the final document is something that I'll use later on in the board's meeting. And these guys will figure it out a heck of a lot quicker than he and I did. So that is, unfortunately, that's the direction that the world is going. So it gives them the opportunity to be able to master that.
I'm envious. I could have been a great student if I had one of those things.
Mr. Rutledge.
A quick question here, in case, like for example, if students are traveling and there's no Wi-Fi available, are the devices 4G LTE or 5G capable?
No.
No?
Chromebooks aren't either, so.
All right. I need a motion to have us all go back to school next year and we can play with these. Did anybody entertain that motion?
I'm not on the agenda. He's got his eyes on it here.
We're going to, yeah, we're going to activate the Find The iPad on that one right away. Thank you very much. That was a great presentation. I know it's tough live, but you did an awesome job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Switching technology.
There we go. So back in June last year, we actually, Gary Carr from his NUNTAC actually reached out with an opportunity from 3M. So each year, 3M is looking to expand the potential workforce for a number of their facilities. So 3M currently operates a separation and purification sciences division in Stafford Springs. In order to kind of develop a pipeline for future workforce, they've started a program that they call their MAP, their manufacturing and academic partnership. And it's really, the goal of the program is to work with community colleges and local area schools and areas near some of their manufacturing facilities to develop the skills that are in most demand for their industry. And really, the area that was in most demand is the area of electronics and machine control technology. So as part of this, they reached out and Enfield is, already has several existing partnerships with its NUNTAC for our College Connections program. And because of the location of their manufacturing plant in Stafford, they've incorporated Enfield High School, its NUNTAC, and Stafford High School into what they're calling their MAP program. And I'd like to give you a brief overview of that tonight. So as I mentioned, 3M is kind of looking to fill their talent pipeline in their advanced manufacturing fields. This is currently a program that's operating more towards their corporate headquarters out in Minnesota and down through the Midwest, but they're looking to expand this idea to schools out near other manufacturing facilities they have. And we're going to be one of the first ones in the region. So the idea of the program is pretty simple. They link up with an academic, with an academic institution, usually a community college or technical college. They offer a grant to that university in order to purchase equipment and for them to provide training for teachers and school systems in the area to really help deliver curriculum in the classroom. And as part of that, they also commit some of their employees at the local manufacturing facility to come in and offer help and mentorship to students who are in the program so that they can see what career opportunities are available for them upon graduation. So currently, there are two people, John Plaster and Kevin Knight at this plant in Stafford, who 3M will make available as part of this program to help come in and mentor students, be available for things like career days, and help promote things like tours to see how industry works. And then through this, they're going to reach out to educators to provide training in areas that probably aren't normally included in high school curriculum. So one of the, we're looking at kind of the Phase 1 right now, which is the mech lab trainers. And what this is, is a training system for electromechanical control. Essentially, if you see automated assembly lines in news clips or online, these are the control systems that can control how materials move through an assembly line or plant. So what they would do is they'll grant, essentially as NUNTAC, money to purchase series, sets of mech lab trainers for the schools that they'll be supporting. And then they'll provide professional development for teachers who agree to deliver some curriculum in their classrooms. One of the correct places we've identified that this could be a, or a good addition to what we're teaching is in our electronics courses now, as well as possibly our robotics courses. So they would provide training on how to use some of the technical systems, and they'll help students build and work through a series of models. So example is one is a magazine sort and stacker. So they'll teach kids how to use electronic systems and pneumatics in order to make a magazine stacker, a conveyor system, and a handling station. What their ultimate goal is, is to get students interested in manufacturing as a possible career and then hope to pursue that as a degree program at your local community college. We already have a College Connections pathway with its NUNTAC for electromechanical control technology. So this is a natural partnership. If students take electronics freshman or sophomore year, the opportunity to start that associate's program, their junior and senior year, so they could really be looking at employment up to, you know, just about a year after graduating high school. And from what we heard from talking to the people at 3M is these jobs are very high-paying starting salary, 35 plus an hour for someone coming out of, you know, a certificate or associate's program at the community college in machine control. So there's job opportunities available. They're going to provide the paid training for our teachers over the summer. They'll provide the materials, and they provided us a very detailed thorough curriculum that we can use for 10 weeks in our electronics class, which is a great addition to what we're already doing because it gives the students more real applications of where the electronics theory that they're learning could be applied. Any questions?
Any questions? What he said.
What's, what kind of commitment do we have to give to be part of this program? I know we're geographically located, that's one of the things, that they're reaching out to people that are within their area, the geographical area, but what kind of commitment do we have to make to them?
So our commitment is really that we're going to provide the train, we're going to work to get a teacher to the training. So we basically have to commit that we're going to send someone to the training, and then it's really just a commitment to deliver the curriculum. So we would just have to coordinate with its NUNTAC to get the trainers into the classroom and deliver it. There's no real commitment. It's coming through a grant through the 3M's charitable arm. So they're granting the money to its NUNTAC. But as far as us, if we decided that it doesn't work for us, we could not continue with the program in the future. We're not signing a contract necessarily to deliver it, but by accepting the help, we're just saying we're going to provide a teacher for training so that they can deliver it.
I think it's a wonderful program, and you presented to us at a curriculum meeting, and I thought it was a wonderful program at that point. The one question I have is if we invest in this, we get several teachers involved, they give a grant to the college, how long is their commitment to carry that out? Because we're actually putting this within our curriculum, if I'm not mistaken.
We are. They said that their commitment is ongoing. As far as we've heard, they're going to be providing multiple years of support. So I think it's something that they plan to sustain. When we were meeting with them, they actually flew out, gentleman Sean Mullin from Minnesota to come and actually tour the school back in September. So we met with Gary Carr from his NUNTAC, we met with John Plaster and Kevin Knight, and we actually toured the school and talked about it. And they said that they're looking at this as more of a long-term proposal. If they're talking to freshmen and sophomore, they know they might not see, you know, potential workers for four, five, maybe six years down the road. So it's something they're looking to sustain in order to make sure that they have kind of a continual pipeline of talent that they could help fill needs in their facilities.
As you say, we're going to go to that commitment. We need theirs as well. It sounds like you've elicited that from them, so that's great. Keep up the good work, John.
Playing tennis here, folks. Anything else?
No, it's awesome. I mean, there's really not much to say, except it's a phenomenon.
Of course, it's for Mr. Dag. It's always awesome. It's simple.
Mr. Renier, this is the fun stuff we do during curriculum meeting. I just want you to know that. We always sing John's praises.
Thank you, Mr. Dag. And don't go far because you're up again. 6. Mr. Dag or Mr. Dreszekford?
No.
So this was actually another opportunity that just kind of presented itself. So basically, John LaFrancis, who works up at Springfield Technical Community College, actually came with us and offered an articulation for coursework that our students are offering, are already taking at Enfield High. So right now, we offer a Introduction to Engineering Design course and a Principles of Engineering course. These are part of our Project Lead the Way STEAM curriculum. And these two courses, we already had an agreement with University of New Haven for students to earn college credit there, but this is another extension for that, another opportunity for students to earn credit. And the advantages for STIC are actually, there's actually multiple to this. So the students could be enrolled in Enfield High, Intro to Engineering, that's nine through 12, Principles of Engineering is grades 10 through 12, and they can earn three credits at STIC for free for each course. All they need to do is reach a benchmark, an academic benchmark in the course. And then it's really just the teacher fills out a form which lists the course, their grade, and that's something they can present to admissions for credit if they looked to apply to the STIC program. Now, there's a couple advantages to this, and one of those is not only could they be earning six credits, but STIC, because this is a essentially mechanical engineering technology program, they can get reciprocal tuition rate up at that community college so they could get essentially the in-state rate for mechanical engineering or CNC operations. To further kind of sweeten the deal, those associate's degree credits are also transferable to a bachelor's program offered through Northeastern College of Professional Studies that's offered on STIC's campus. So they could essentially take credits they're earning in high school for free, transfer them into an associate's that can then be transferred into a bachelor's from Northeastern that they take on STIC campus at STIC price. So it's just another opportunity for, kind of almost like a double articulation for credits. And all it takes for our students is for the teacher to sign off that they've met a specific academic benchmark, and they leave the class with the paper that they can present for college credit at STIC.
Any questions? Ms. Riley.
I'm surprised that this never ceases to blow my mind, the awesome opportunities that we have for our kids. So I would just say, let's keep it going because I definitely want to see my kids be able to take advantage of this because some of the stuff I'm seeing right now definitely applies to my son and what's up his alley. So if we can just keep this rolling for another, you know, 10, 15 years, it'll be good. And then after that, and after that, and after that, just like, let's not stop. This is awesome. Thanks, guys.
Mr. Pope.
Yeah, and just a quick comment that these are especially amazing opportunities because I think we're all at this point hyper-aware of the cost of post-secondary education. And this is just such a great way, especially to get, you know, Northeastern credits, those don't come cheap, you know? So definitely for a student to have the opportunity to pursue something that they're interested in at, you know, a really high caliber program for a very reasonable cost by the time it's all said and done, I just, I think that's really incredible, and I think it's something that we need to shout from the rooftops and tell everyone about because you don't often find those opportunities, and they're literally falling into our laps in Enfield, you know, thanks to your hard work and our partners' hard work as well. So I just hope everybody, you know, stops, takes a minute, you know, maybe reaches out to Mr. Dag or whoever else has information on these programs and really takes it to heart and takes us up on those opportunities that we're throwing out there, so.
This is something that we're promoting through the career counselors as well. So it's promoted through in the courses, so the students are made aware of the credit opportunities for both University of New Haven if they're looking to go, you know, into, straight into a four-year program, but then they're also hearing about the opportunities in class. But then also, like I mentioned, the career counselors are promoting all of these opportunities, not only with STIC, but with also our NUNTAC partners as well.
Follow-up question. Do we have anything planned for direct parent contact or information that's being provided straight to parents? Because I know the kids may hear it, but sometimes that gets lost in communication between them and their family members. So do we have any plans to more directly advise parents of what's available?
So there's a couple different ways that that's done. Typically, you know, through our Program of Studies nights, all these programs on there, promoting them, they're often highlighted at the presentation at the beginning with our credit-bearing opportunities for that. And then sometimes things like the newsletter that goes out from the Career Center, you know, they offer information sessions on some of the credit option programs that we have.
Thanks.
Mr. Neville.
Ashley stole some of my questions, but that's okay.
All right. So next one.
She goes to the same meetings that we go to. One of the things that we've taken a strong hand in is providing opportunities to kids. Through Michelle and you guys, you're bringing all kinds of new opportunities, and we greatly appreciate it. But I think your question about the parents is a very, very good one, and I think we can do those kinds of things. But one of the things that we keep talking to Michelle about, we need to get you guys up here, because a lot of people watch this show, and they can hear directly from you and hear the questions that we have for you and get some experience about what types of opportunities we have for these kids. I think if we can kind of get as many of these types of events and opportunities to hear things, to see things, and so on, I think that gets the message out to the parents as well. But the work that you're doing is just incredible. I wish it was around when my kids were around and going to school because the cost of post-secondary education... post-secondary education is going to keep us from retiring for a long time, right? Yeah. Thanks, John. Thanks again. I appreciate it.
Any other comment, Mr. Poe?
Sorry, so many follow-up questions. I don't know if I have to direct this through you to the superintendent, or if I have to ask Mr. Degg directly. But are there any students who have completed the College Connections program who could come speak to the board about what it was like?
Are you asking for students who are completing it on the high school end, or students who completed it to a degree or certificate?
Either or both, ideally to the certificate, if we've had enough years doing it so far, just so that someone who's actually lived it and gained employment through it could maybe share that. I'd love to hear from the horse's mouth how it was, if possible. I don't know.
I know that we've had at least two students who have finished. I think we're going to have to get back to you on that one through Chris.
I didn't think you could answer it right now, but I wanted to ask.
Or something next year, something.
It doesn't have to be, you know, like in the next month or whatever, just anyone that you know of who might be near the end or just finished.
We'll have to get back to you.
We'll get back to you. Again, thank you. Just keep doing what you can. If any else falls on your lap, please bring it to us. No problem. So the show continues again. Six E Invention Convention, Mr. Degg.
It does. We actually, this is just a kind of a positive news flash for you. But each year, we have students who participate in the Invention Convention. If you're not familiar with the program, the Invention, it is an after-school program where students take and they're researching, design, build, and present a solution to a problem in their life. So they're working through essentially the engineering design process, similar to what we would use in our STEAM classes. But they're going through and they're working after school in depth, and they're building the solution at home, and then presenting it out at our local Enfield Invention Convention. So this year, we had one hundred and thirty-four students participating in grades three through six. And we had about a hundred of those who presented at the Enfield Invention Convention back in March. We sent eleven on to the Connecticut Invention Convention, which was May fourth down at Gamble Pavilion. And we had six recognized students there. But for the second year in a row, we've actually had students invited to Nationals. And this year, we have four students who have been invited to attend Nationals in Dearborn, Michigan, coming up May twenty-ninth through thirty-first. So for that, students get invited to the Henry Ford Museum and get to have multiple-day presentations where they're presenting their work to panels of judges. And students there offered, who, when they're offered opportunities to have their inventions patented and go through the entire process. So it's another just great opportunity for the students. And I just wanted to share some of the creativity of the students that we have in Enfield. So just from JFK, Sophia Carrier had her invention, the Cat Commander. This is a device that if your cat tries to get out the door and, you know, kind of rush past you, it will take and blow air on the cats to have it so that it doesn't rush out the door past you. I have a, I have some personal experience, and I could have used this one a little while ago, when my cat ran across my fresh-finished hardwood floors before they had dried, escaping from the basement. So I needed this one in September. Emily Gorley. So Emily is from Eli Whitney, and she has the Don't Trip Clip with her invention. It was essentially a way to make sure that your shoelaces didn't come untied, a clip that went on them so that they didn't come untied and trip. Serenity Gomez is a two-time student going to Nationals. This is her second time going. The process is iterative, so you can take and refine ideas. So this is a refining of our game, Making Sense of Sense. It's a game that uses sense for students who might be seeing impaired, so they can participate with sighted and unsighted students. So this is actually, she's a two-time national attenders. And then Ethan Samick, the Bio Balloon, which is an interesting one. A lot of times balloons go up, but this balloon would be made of a biodegradable material. And I think it has plant seeds in it, so that it can like grow a plant when it, when a balloon comes down, if it was accidentally released. So again, that was, Ethan received two recognitions at the State Invention Convention for this one. So I just wanted to share some of those, some of the hard work that the students are doing. And so this will be it tonight.
Comments, concerns, questions? Thank you, sir, again. Congratulations to our kids. They, they are smart as all. Well, wait a minute, you're doing a superintendent's report, aren't you?
It'll be really short, then.
Thank you, sir. And grab that before Scott does. I know he did, but.
There's the Find the iPad app, so, you know.
Plus, we'll leave it, we'll leave it here, and then we'll never see it again. Mr. Dreszek, number seven, is all yours.
So before he leaves, I just want to thank John again. This is all in addition to everything else he does in his daily life, which is basically anything we can't figure out, we go get John. And I want to thank, recognize Michelle, who's here as well. A lot of times in her, and I want to sell short, Carrie and Megan, they're constantly bringing us so much innovative things to our table that we don't always get an opportunity to share with you. But there's a lot of times when Andy and I are dealing with whatever the issue of the day is, and we look at each other and say, what are our kids learning today? So we walk down there, and then we get ten minutes with these guys, and we realize we're in pretty good shape. So we're very lucky to have them, so. So thank you both again. John also knows how to build buildings and sprinkler heads and all that stuff that we, that's not in his job description, but he's continuing to do so. Thank you, Michelle and John, again. And we have our student rep here. Matt is here.
It's all yours, Matt.
Thank you, guys. Oh, one last thing with Mr. Degg. If any of you have an inquiring mind, he also knows everything about anything. So on Fridays, I go down there with a question that might be bothering me about something that's so mundane I haven't been able to figure out on my ears on earth, and John has an actual answer for it. Like, how was the television invented? I didn't know it was about cornfields, but John did. So just giving you proof examples.
Thank you.
Matt, yep.
Sorry, Matt. I'll reset the clock. Go ahead.
That's okay. Thank you. I'd like to say, I wish, I wish when I were a freshman that some of these programs that Mr. Degg is doing now were already up and rolling, because, I don't know, I think, I think they're pretty attractive when you're, when you have the choice between that and a lot of college debt. So I think that's a good program. We have reached our second and final week of AP exams. We made it. We're excited. We're also excited for the Enfield High School Awards and Scholarships Night on Monday, May twentieth, at six-thirty, which I think you'll hear more about, but really excited for that one. We have a band concert this Thursday, May sixteenth, at six-thirty in the Enfield High Auditorium. Next Thursday, May twenty-third, we have an orchestra and small ensembles concert, same place, same time. This Saturday, the EHS Relay for Life team will be participating in the North Central Connecticut Relay. That's at Sunny's Place. And I think now we've raised about $2,000, so hopefully make a little bit more in the last few days. And I know that's a big event, and that raises a lot of money with groups from all around northern and central Connecticut. The Spanish National Honor Society induction for new sophomore and junior members is going to be next Wednesday, May twenty-second, at six-thirty in the Enfield High School Auditorium. Everything's at six-thirty in the Enfield High School Auditorium. And something, something exciting is Monday, May twentieth, we will be hosting all the eighth graders in town from JFK. That'll be incoming freshmen next year. And we're going to do tours and other kind of orientation events with them. And we're excited, because usually we break that into two days, so we have smaller groups, but we're going to have all the eighth graders there. So excited but nervous. So we'll see how that goes. But we're looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And if you need to leave, please go study for an AP or whatever, please. Okay. Mr. Dreszek.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As Matt mentioned, that the Enfield High School Award and Scholarship Ceremony is on Monday, the twentieth, at six-thirty. There's an invitation in your packet. As a reminder, all Enfield Public Schools and offices will be closed on Monday, May twenty-seventh, in observation of Memorial Day. Schools will resume regular scheduled hours on Tuesday, May twenty-eighth. Their listing of May events is enclosed in your packet. And you'll notice that we're at that time of year where it's award season, so the list will grow longer and longer, between now and the end of June. And lastly, what's not in your packet is that tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM in the Enfield Senior Center, the Enfield Police Department is holding their Outstanding Citizens Award Ceremony. And I mention this tonight because there are three of our Enfield Public Schools employees who are being recognized for going above and beyond their job description. And that's actually the three nurses at JFK Middle School who are being recognized by the police department. So Mr. Longy and I will be there in attendance, but I wanted to make sure that the invitation's open to all board members and anyone who's obviously watching at home. In the event you're unable to make it, it's just a reminder of last week was not just Teacher Appreciation Week, but last Wednesday was Nurse Appreciation Week. If you ever opportunity to run into one of your child's school nurses, just a friendly reminder to say thank you for all that they do, because, as you know, as parents, when something's bleeding or someone's not feeling well, you know what that, it's like having to deal with in your own home. Just magnify that times about 500, and that's just a typical day for our school nurses. So I want to take this opportunity to thank them again. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Any questions for the superintendent? Do we have any audiences?
No, I don't think so.
You can't see it on TV. I have to say it that way. I declare audiences closed. Board member comments? I should go first, but I will, I will go last, so. Who wants to go first? No, no, that's fine. Who wants to go? Are you kidding me?
I just.
Ms. Riley.
Go ahead.
No, Ms. LeBlanc, then.
Next Wednesday, May twenty-second, is the Enfield Eagles Baseball Senior Game, or Senior Day. And they're being, it's being played at the Dunkin' Donuts Park at 3:45. There's an event on Facebook. They'll be honoring their senior players and their senior manager. The admission is free, and parking is $5. So I think it's a really nice event. I think it's great that both the East Granby coach and the Enfield High coach work together to make this happen. And the kids seem pretty excited about it. They used to, we used to actually play against East Granby when we were in a different conference. So I know a lot of people are going, and it's exciting. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. LeBlanc. Ms. Riley?
Okay. I wanted to say that first readers, we're going to have elections in June, next month, and we are going to have at least one board position open for secretary. And we always need more volunteers. I would hate to see an organization such as that fall by the wayside because of not enough involvement. So if anybody out there is listening and wants to join, feel free to go to our website, email us, go to our Facebook page, and let us know you're interested. And we've actually moved the meetings up to five o'clock now, instead of 4:30, to maybe accommodate some more people coming. Some of us ladies have gone out and gotten new jobs, so we're trying to accommodate everybody. So that's, that's what we're looking forward to. I wanted to thank all the teachers and administrators for all their dedication and excellence and hard work. I know last week was Teacher Appreciation Week, so I'm saying my thanks now. I wanted to give a shout out to Effie for their honor and educator during last week's Teacher Appreciation Week. It was, I believe it was their highest amount of teachers that they had recognized by parents ever, and which is a great thing, because part of the money goes towards the grants that Enfield teachers apply for, and it funds those grants. So that's a really great thing. So I wanted to give them a shout out. And I also wanted to give a special shout out to Invention Convention, Ethan Samick, because he is in my Cub Scout pack. He is a wonderful child. He is very compassionate, and he's always willing to help other kids. And he is also a phenomenal hockey player. So this just makes me even more happy to see that he's doing great things academically as well. And then my last comment is that I wanted to suspend the rules and add attorney-client privilege to our executive session.
Motion by Ms. Riley, seconded by Mr. Rutledge. Any discussion on adding that to our agenda? Hand vote? All in favor? Eight, zero, zero. Mr. Ryder?
Okay. I also want to thank one of the, or send out good wishes and good luck to one of the Invention Convention students from Eli Whitney. My oldest friend in Enfield, Emily Gorley, with her No Trip Clip. When we first moved here, that family's children and mine were in the same daycare. So even before we got into Enfield Public Schools, we are, we've been friends with that family. So good luck to all four of our inventors, and a special good luck to Emily. So thank you. Also, just wanted to remind everybody about enfieldpto.com. There's calendars on there that are very important as we get to this time of year. Field Day, Unity Day, Spring Book Fairs, end-of-year assemblies, a lot of things that parents are looking for, because they want to take time off to make sure they're there for a second-grade celebration before they go on to the next school, or a fifth grade or an eighth grade celebration. So all those dates that we have are all on there. And there's also a lot of volunteer opportunities for parents and guardians at this time of year, whether, again, it be like a Field Day or a Unity Day. So now is a great time to request a morning off from work and go help out your kids and be a part of the school, and something fun that they're doing as the years wind down. Also, at Eli Whitney, the Girls on the Run program wrapped up last week, and this Saturday, they'll be doing their celebratory 5K run. We have twenty girls. It's the largest class we've had there. We had fifteen students each of the last two years. This year, there's twenty students. So I wanted to personally thank the Girls on the Run coaches, the teachers, the volunteers, my wife, for all the work they did. Basically, it's a team-building group that just happens to run at the end of each session. It's not necessarily a running club. Some of the girls that are in it didn't take it because they like to run. Some of them learned to run. But again, it's more of a team-building thing for the girls, and that's available to all kids, grades three through five. We also had a coach that helped us out that didn't even teach at Eli Whitney. She taught at another school in town in hopes of bringing this program to her school next year. So I wanted to thank everybody for that. And if you're going to be in Bloomfield, near the Cigna Campus, Saturday morning on May eighteenth, that's where their celebratory 5K is at 9:00 AM. Also wanted to mention, outside of our school district, but also related to our schools through Kite, there's this program called Parent Leadership Academy, or PLA. I took that class in 2014. One of the legacy projects that was started even before I joined that class was the Enfield Townwide Tag Sale. So that is something that has continued. We have raised almost $15,000 over the years. You pay $25, your address goes on a map. Those maps are all over Facebook. So if you're on Facebook, you go to Enfield Townwide Tag Sale, you can download the map. The shopping is the Saturday, May eighteenth, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And every penny that you contribute, the $25 map entry fee goes right to the Enfield food shelf. In fact, those checks are actually written to the Enfield food shelf. We just track them, have your address for our maps, and then it goes from there. So good luck to all those shoppers this weekend. And I also had, I wanted to make a motion, if that's okay, I want to make a motion to add an item to the agenda. I wanted to add a discussion of the board regarding Forgiving Day 181, which would be Monday, June seventeenth, for students, based on cancellations. We're now ending the year on a Monday. And I was just hoping I could raise a couple of points about that, so.
There is a motion to suspend the rules and add 11D to cancel the last day of school, seconded by Mr. Nimmel. Any discussion? Show of hands? All in favor? Everybody? Eight, zero, zero.
That's just for the discussion.
That's just for the discussion. That, no, that is to add it to the agenda. Any other? Anyone else? Anyone else comments? So I really don't have anything to say. That's why I didn't go, because I wasn't, I can't think of anything right now. So I pretty much said what I needed to say at the beginning of the meeting, so we'll leave it at that. So number 10, unfinished business. We have none. Number 11, new business. 11A, approve adult ed PEP program enhancement continuation grant for 2019, 2020. Do I have a motion? Move by Mr. Nimmel, seconded by Mr. Poe. Any discussion? Mr. Dragic.
This is just a continuation of a grant for our adult education program. It enhances the partnership between an Enfield adult ed and as NUTC. And the dollar amount is at the same level of $40,000, and there's no additional cost to the Board of Ed for this.
Mr. Neville.
Where is the money coming from?
The federal government.
It's a federal grant?
Yeah. The Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act.
That's the left-side picture, not the right-side picture.
Title two.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Renier.
Yes.
Mrs. DePoe.
Yes.
Mr. Rutledge.
Yes.
Mrs. Riley.
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc.
Yes.
Mr. Neville.
Yes.
Mr. Ryder.
Yes.
Chairman Crusell.
Yes.
Motion passes.
11B, approval of 2019 Lester, I screw this name up every year. Bodley Memorial Scholarship recipients. Moved by Mr. Neville, seconded by Ms. Riley. Mr. Dragic.
So this is, this is something that the board has done since 2004, where you announce the recipients of the Lester J. Bodley Memorial Scholarship at a board meeting. Scholarships are awarded each year to a male and female graduating student at Enfield High School. The information in your packet is provided by the Enfield High School Common Application Selection Committee. However, due to student confidentiality and the timing of their award scholarship program, which is Monday, they're recommending that both students be referred to as Student A and B instead of announcing their names publicly. So at this point, you can take any action as need be.
So we just want to amend it to approve Student A and Student B. Second, motion by Mr. Neville, seconded by Ms. Riley.
You don't need to amend it. It's already there. You're just a...
Okay, well, I know last year we said Student A, Student B, so I'm just going back from memory. Anyway, roll call, please.
Mr. Renier.
Yes.
Mrs. DePoe.
Yes.
Mr. Rutledge.
Yes.
Mrs. Riley.
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc.
Yes.
Mr. Neville.
Yes.
Mr. Ryder.
Yes.
Chairman Crusell.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. 11C, approval of 2019 Safe Grad contribution. Any motion? Moved by Mr. Rutledge.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Riley. Any discussion? It's pretty much the same amount as, it's probably in my pocket, isn't it?
It's $1,000.
$1,000.
It used to be $500 per school. We consolidated it to one. The board has always made a contribution to this.
Yeah, well, in the past, it was 500 each. We gave it 1,000. Any other discussion? No, any other discussion?
Just because I'm heavily involved with the Safe Grad Committee this year, I'm just going to abstain from the vote. I just think that that's the right thing for me to do.
That's fine. Roll call, please.
Mr. Renier.
Yes.
Mrs. DePoe.
Yes.
Mr. Rutledge.
Yes.
Mrs. Riley.
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc.
Abstain.
Mr. Neville.
Yes.
Mr. Ryder.
Yes.
Chairman Crusell.
Yes.
Motion passes.
So we have a new 11D discussion about the possible cancellation of the last day of school, brought up by Mr. Ryder.
Yeah, I just wanted to have a discussion. So since we last met on May 23rd, I've spent 64 volunteer hours in the schools between Teacher Appreciation Week, book fairs, and some night events. And because of three cancellations throughout the year, our last day of school moved from a Wednesday to a Monday. So our last, the last two days are both early releases with lunch. Friday, June 14th, we have an early release. Then we're off, obviously, Saturday and Sunday for the weekend. And then we'd be going back to school for approximately 3 hours and 50 minutes on Monday, June 17th. So I just wanted to raise the question that I've heard from, you know, just being in the buildings, I wanted to make sure that I was at least putting it out there, of perhaps forgiving what would then be Day 181 on Monday, June 17th, and ending on Friday, June 14th, still remaining an early release with lunch on that Friday. I don't think it would set a precedent. I'm only asking because it's a Monday. I feel if the last day of school was a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, it wouldn't matter. We'd be going anyway. But to end on an early release on a Friday, have the weekend off, and then come back Monday for a couple of hours, I just, I didn't know what, I don't know how much we'd get out of it. So I just wanted to have that discussion.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Neville can go.
Oh, Mr. Neville.
Yeah, I second the idea because of 38 years of experience on that last half-day. Unfortunately, an awful lot of kids just don't come, okay, for one thing. And secondly, there's, I wished I could say there was tons of meaningful things, learning going on, which I think should go on every day, but I think there's a lot of cleaning, a lot of work that has to get done, just putting things right and so I can close out for the summer. But it's just, having that week, a full, the full week, in my mind, in this case, also to have an opportunity, if it can come to pass with the state, to give us another opportunity to start working on the barnet roof early instead of getting into the debacle that we went into last year. I see that as an option as well.
Any other discussion? Mr. Poe.
I feel a little bit less straightforward about the decision. I definitely understand that it's not exactly going to be meaningful learning. So my acknowledgements are there. My thoughts are more along the line of, it's a contracted day, so our staff's going to have to come in anyway. I think if students choose not to come in, you know, it would be my personal preference. I can't, you know, direct administration here or there on it. I think they just shouldn't be penalized if they choose not to come. Like if someone's kind of on the border as far as, you know, how many absences they have, I personally, you know, it wouldn't bother me if they opted not to come. I think that there is a certain level of burden on parents who do need to pay for childcare and things of that nature. It costs more money to be a full day than a partial day. And I also have concerns. I know the high schoolers won't be getting lunch that day, but I have concerns about students who may greatly benefit from the opportunity to have a meal at school on Monday as well. So that's just kind of my thoughts on it.
I have another comment.
Ms. Riley.
So going along with the high schoolers, they have scheduled graduation practice that day from 8:00 to noon anyways. So they're going to be there. And if they have younger siblings that they have to take care of, which I know a lot of them do, then they're going to be at, you know, they're going to be, they're not going to be able to be home to take care of their younger siblings. Plus, I mean, we've already changed the school calendar a lot of times this year, and, I mean, it's only a half-day. If the parents don't want to send them, you know, they don't have to send them. But this late in the game, I would like to not, you know, make further changes. But, I mean, I understand where you're coming from. I'd like to get, you know, a jump on the barnet roof and, you know, not a lot of learning's going to happen, but, you know, I didn't make the snow days happen. It is what it is. That's how they landed, you know? So...
No, we're not throwing you either of those. Mr. Blank.
Is there lunch on that Monday?
The last two days, yeah.
There are early releases with lunch.
Friday and Monday would be.
Yeah. I'm actually in support of having the last day be Friday for the kids. It makes a parent's decision a lot easier a month ahead about whether or not they're going to send their kids to school. I think it actually takes the pressure off the parents. As far as the kids graduating, that's only the senior class. It's not, that has graduation practice from 8:00 to 12:00 that day. I know that a half-day costs more for childcare, but literally, it's a Monday-through-Friday thing. It's not like the kids have to go to school for a half-day on Monday and then childcare. It's one day. I would be less concerned if we were trying to make up two days. I just think in support of Scott and Tim, that I agree that the last day of school, I would like to see on the 14th for the kids.
Any other discussion? Mr. Renier.
A couple of questions. One, I guess the question would be if we were to shorten it to the Friday and something happens in regards to localized flooding, that's not out of the realm of possibility, and then we have to extend it another day again, would that, again, put us out to the Monday if we had to delay school again? If we were to eliminate...
Any emergency cancellation would result?
Oh, any additional cancellations would just continue. Because right now, you're, the board calendar is set for 181 days. You set that. So in order to make the 181 days per board policy, that would land on the Monday. So if there is a cancellation, sorry, tomorrow because of snow, because it's snowing, yeah, it would just, you'd just keep pushing it out per, you know, per your policy.
And my second question would be to the superintendent. I mean, obviously, this is his job to manage the schools and get his thought on the proposal and how he thinks that would affect the education.
Unfortunately, this is one decision I'm not authorized to make. I don't have the ability to set the calendar. You know, last year, when you guys eliminated the date, I made a recommendation because we had to substitute Good Friday, if you recall. So we did eliminate the 181st day last year, but that was out of necessity with nine snow days. Ultimately, the decision to make to alter the calendar, legally, you have to go 180 days, so there's no debate amongst that. You know, the additional 181st day is always up to the, to the board's discretion. Now, that's, that's obviously a decision that I can't utillaterally make, or else that would have been, the question would have been posed to me.
Academically, is there a lot of curriculum occurring on the last day of school?
I would defer that to our fine folks in the building.
Any other discussion? Go ahead.
I would assume that we would not get any sort of contract credit from the bus company for not running buses one last day.
Well, probably not because it's already been planned out. I don't, I haven't explored that with them at this point. That would be, obviously, once you guys make a decision, we would have that conversation.
Will bus drivers lose money for that day, that they don't drive buses?
If they're hourly employees, I would imagine, but I, again, I haven't had that conversation with the bus company thus far.
Ms. LeBlanc.
If it helps any with Smith, they, I've learned so much about Smith Bus this year, especially with Safe Grad. They donate all the buses for Safe Grad at no charge, and they, their drivers volunteer. So just wanted to throw that out there. They're wonderful to work with.
Oh, Scott. Mr. Ryder.
No, I just wanted to say in conclusion, it was something that had come to me. I work, you know, we all work and volunteer for the kids and the teachers in our buildings. So I feel good asking the question and having the debate as, as all I, that's pretty much all I said I could do. A couple of folks asked, and I said I will bring it up. So I, I think it's a good idea. I think it makes sense, and I just wanted to make sure that we had this discussion.
You guys are, you put me in the middle of this whole... It is a tough one, because I don't want the parents that like the daycare. We heard that before. I don't, and then, and then, yeah, then we got, now you brought up even a new thing with the school bus drivers, that we're going to hear complaints from school bus drivers that we didn't get to work a day. I don't know if we're going to hear it, but...
Plus, we do have a lot of free reduced lunch kids. They may not get a meal. They may miss out on something.
So we're not going to get, we're not going to get a discount on the meals. We're not going to get a discount from the bus. We're not going to get, we're not going to get any payback on this. And I think it gives the kids one more day to clean out their lockers and clean out all their stuff at school.
I have another question for the superintendent, and you may not be able to answer this, or it may put you in a position to answer this, because it's kind of a very individual issue for any students that might be there. If a student who has, you know, if a student who misses the last day of school, if that's their 10th tardy, or if that's their 15th absence, or if that's their 15th absence, I mean, is there any grace in the repercussions there if a parent were to say, you know what, great for everyone who needs the meal, the locker cleaning, the whatever? You know, I would hate to, I kind of want to almost leave it up to the parents to decide if their kids want to go.
The way that it's written, no. If school's being held and a child is absent that day, no. We did run into this last year where the board has the ability to waive the attendance policy for that particular reason, but again, that's another decision, unfortunately, for the nine of you. You would have to make, because I don't have the authority to make that decision either.
Let it be known, I would love to waive that policy if it helps.
Roll call.
I'm done for that.
We ready, we ready for roll call, or anyone else want to talk?
So I guess procedural question. If we vote on Scott's motion, and if we approve it, then that's the conversation. And if it doesn't approve, can there be another motion to vote on the suspension of the attendance policy? Or like, how? Because I wouldn't want to, you know...
You would have to make a motion to suspend the rules and add another item to the agenda.
All right.
But could we do that now, or was that supposed to be done in board comments? Oh, that's right. We don't even have a motion. This is only discussion. We don't even have a motion on it. Okay, so I make, I'm not making, I ask for a motion to... Well, the sooner we do it this year...
I mean, if you put it off, we can look at, we can see if bus drivers are not going to be getting paid for that day. We can look to see about the lunches. I mean, there's a lot of questions we asked tonight that could get answered if we put this off until the next meeting. And the end of school isn't for another month, so, I mean... There's no reason to rush it.
I think we're overthinking this.
I think we are overthinking it. I, I think we're overthinking it in the sense that we're just trying to end the school week and the school year on a Friday. It's not like they're going to Wednesday and we're just trying to end it on a Tuesday. I think it just seems to make sense to end that, the school year on that Friday, on that, at the end of the year. It's, we're not ending it midweek or taking a day back midweek.
In all honesty, I don't, it wouldn't be a discussion. It's just the fact that it's a Monday, and I'd like for the kids to be done on Friday. I mean, like I said, if it was a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, it wouldn't make sense.
I think if we, if we make a decision, we should make it sooner rather than later.
That's why. I think, I think we make it today and get it over with. Because if we keep delaying it, it's just, it's going to get more people angry.
So we'd have to make a motion...
So I, so, so I need a motion to cancel the 181th, the 181st day.
For students.
For students, and also waive the attendance. Okay. It's the two motions. Okay. So the first motion is to cancel the 181 day, which will be June...
Monday, June 17th.
June 17th. Do I have a motion?
Four students.
Four students. Do I have a motion? Moved by Mr. Neville, seconded by Mr. Ryder.
Point of order, should that be clarified to not include seniors since they have to show up for the graduation rehearsal?
They would be showing up anyway.
After, they can't walk.
If we didn't have any cancellation days, they still would be rehearsing that day, because we would have been done Wednesday, the 12th.
Yeah.
Just a point of clarification.
Oh, it's good.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Renier.
I have questions, so I abstain.
Mrs. DePoe?
No.
Mr. Rutledge?
No.
Mrs. Riley?
No.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Neville?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Four, yes.
Chairman Crusell?
No.
Two, three, four. It's tied. I believe an abstention counts.
Oh, wait a minute, it's four.
Four.
Two.
Two, three.
Three.
It was rich of...
Four noes.
Rich of abstained.
It was four noes, one abstention.
Rich. Oh, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, four.
Okay.
Four to three, one abstention.
So, it's three yes, four noes, one abstention.
So...
So, it did not pass. So, we do not need to make another motion.
Yes, we do.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, yes, yes, we do. Okay, so, I need a motion to... To waive the attendance policy on the last day of June 20...
Actually, a point of order, we would need to make a motion to suspend the rules and modify the agenda again first. So, with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and modify the agenda at item 11E to waive the attendance policy for the last day of school.
Motion by Mr. Rutledge, seconded by Mr. Poe. Any discussion on adding it to the agenda? Show of hands. We have eight in favor, zero against. So, now I need a motion to approve the... Read it for me, whatever. Read what you said again.
Oh, I'd like to make a motion to waive the attendance policy for the last day of school.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Rutledge, seconded by Mr. Poe. Any discussion on that motion? Yeah, students. Students' attendance.
I consider it a friendly amendment, so there you go.
That's, that's actually, that's a good point.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Vanyay?
Yes.
Mrs. Depau?
Yes.
Mr. Rutledge?
Yes.
Mrs. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Neville?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Chairman Cruzel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Can we move to 12?
Yep.
Thank you. Board of Committee comments, Curriculum, Mr. Neville.
The Curriculum Committee met last Thursday, and we had two items on the agenda. One was the purchase of Grade 8 history books. They recommended a Grade 8 US history book, and it's basically, the course covers pre-colonial America through Reconstruction. And by purchasing these texts, it will complete the purchase of new social studies textbooks in grades 6 to 11. And it will finally, after many years, all the books in the history department, social studies department, will all align with the new social studies standards that were adopted in 2015. And as was discussed earlier today, that, Mr. Poe, we have digital copies, which is part of the purchase price to do these things. And I, the superintendent can correct me if I'm wrong, they will be allowed to use those digital copies on these new devices, correct?
On the iPad, yes.
iPad, yes, okay. It's finally, this took a long time to get the social studies people up to the standards, and we're appreciative of that. I think we liked the book, and we appreciated the materials that come with it, that they have access to. And we gave, the consensus was to go ahead with the purchase, which is currently in the budget, this year's budget, if I'm not mistaken. I think it was like $107 a book or something like that, close?
Yep.
Yeah.
So, the total cost was around $140,000, was it? Somewhere in the ballpark there?
No, I don't think it was that high.
Well, we bought 100 and something books, I think.
Oh, we bought more than 100. I'll have to get back on that.
Yeah.
That number's too high. So, but the budget, it is allocated in the budget, and it will be purchased in time for the new school year. The second item we had was, we reviewed the Accountability Index explanation and presentation that Ms. Middleton gave us. And we had a very long and fruitful discussion, but we went through a lot of material, and we just didn't have enough time to digest it all. So, basically, we'll report back on that after our next meeting. It's just, it's too complicated in some ways. Doesn't make some sense in terms of what the state is looking at. And I think we had a lot of questions about that, so...
There was some discussion as well that some of the standards that are currently being measured, there's no benchmark set right now. So, they're collecting data and they're sort of organizing districts, but it's not fully meaningful because they're still developing the benchmark, presumably in response to how the districts are faring at some of the assessments and things of that nature. So, there's more to come on that. I think that there's a lot of information that maybe we can't quite speak to yet without some more context, but we're going to try to make it digestible for future...
We need to digest the 20 pages of material that we got and data. And we also need to get some more clarification because although I think we understood what they were doing, I don't think the most, it was, they were using school jargon. And I think that it doesn't make for a clear understanding of some of the outcomes that we're looking at. So, I think we need a chance to have further discussion. I think we discussed it for over an hour.
Yeah.
Okay, it was worthy of discussion. You're all invited to come the next time if you want to, so...
But we'll try to come up with something a little more succinct and palatable that's a little bit easier to get the real meaningful information.
And I think it will also have to be presented to you guys. You need to understand what we're looking at. And this is substantially different from what we've looked at, at least in my mind.
It's a very different way of looking at how we're doing.
And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Neville. B, Finance, Ms. Riley.
We met yesterday, and we are on track still for budget. Things are, you know, more money is coming in, going out as people pay us tuition, and we're paying tuitions out. So, since June is like the big time for settling everything, we decided that we're going to skip the June meeting. So, Pat West can do the end-of-year finances. And so, our next meeting's going to be on August 19th. And I wanted to just say, like, every time we have a meeting, we talk about nutrition financials. It is a sobering moment because we do have a lot of free and reduced lunch kids in our district. So, I would just say, you know, the summer's coming, you know, that, they have the Lunch Bunch program out there for the summer. And, you know, a lot of times, food shelves there, stocks are running low. So, if you have some extra, you know, money or something, make donations to those places because it seems like our community is one that needs it. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Riley. Mr. Policy, Mr. Vanyay?
Unfortunately, due to a special board event meeting, the policy meeting was canceled for May. So, at this rate, it looks like we'll be meeting straight for a week in June at this rate, so...
Okay, Mr. Vanyay. Leadership, we had none. Joint facilities, we have the second phase of Henry Barnard Roof is on schedule to be approved this week by the state, and it's already out to state bid for contract. The state bidder is for, not for contract, for, out for bid to state-approved contractors, I should say, okay. Any other comments on that? Okay. JFK Building Committee, they're meeting this Thursday. They did not meet last Thursday. And I think they're working on the CMR contract at this point, yeah?
They're going to have to go to a Saturday meeting to do an interview.
Yes, yes. We'll find out more this Thursday on that. Joint Security, anyone want to elaborate on that?
We're meeting again on June 11th for obviously, obvious reasons. We can't divulge a lot of the information talked about there, but we are definitely making progress. What did I say?
You said the 11th.
Oh, I'm sorry. And I'm looking right at my calendar, too, yeah, June 12th.
Any other committees? And I just want to add that this whole Section 12 was added by my predecessor to make aware of all our committees' work. Because in the past, it was just, you know, people would just talk. So, we decided to spell it all out by committee and have it on the agenda. And it was something that he suggested and was approved by a previous board, so...
I may add into that, one of the things that he always put out there was that most of the work on this board is done by committee. I don't think people really understand that. And we bring it back to the whole board, but we sub it out to the various committees and sometimes special committees to do that. That was kind of his mantra.
So, I just want to add that. Number 13, approval of minutes, regular board event meeting, April 23rd, 2019. Moved by Mr. Rutledge, seconded by Ms. Riley. Any discussion, additions, subtractions? All in favor? We have seven, and any against?
No, abstaining.
One abstention. So, seven, one abstention. 13, special board event meeting minutes, May 1st, 2019. Moved by Ms. Riley, seconded by Mr. Blank.
I thought I was voting.
You really are tired.
Any discussion, additions, subtractions? All in favor?
Now you can raise your hand.
Eight in favor, zero against. Number 14, Ms. Riley's favorite time of the meeting.
Okay. Finance Committee met on May 13th, 2019 to review financial statements for the month of April year-to-date and to examine various documents related to finances. Our review concluded there is nothing significant to report to the board. I move that we accept the superintendent's certification as follows. I hereby certify that in the month of April, total expenditures amount to $6,45,304.61 broken down between payroll totaling $4,38,465.95 and other accounts totaling $2,608,38.66. All payments have been made in accordance with the approved budget and are properly accounted for within the books of accounts. Copies of approval for check invoices are properly documented.
Motion by Ms. Riley?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Rutledge. Any discussion, show of hands? Eight in favor, zero against. Thank you. Any line item transfers?
Not this time, no.
Thank you. Any correspondence and communications?
There are, oh, the invitation, I'm sorry, to Adele Education. Everybody should have there for the graduation on Thursday, June 6th, at 7:00.
Okay. I need a motion to go into executive session, matters related to personnel/attorney-client privilege. Moved by Mr. Neville, seconded by Mr. Poe. Any discussion, all in favor? Eight in favor, zero against. We will be not returning to TV, so good night and thank you.